...in this facility, the facility to south and surrounding community. And we came up with the idea that what Maurice was entitled is that we wanted to have a grocery store.
And look at this, gardens, picnic tables, a barbecue area, a community room and computer lab are all part of the perks. Some of the rents here, depending on your income, can be as low as $300.
It's a very good feeling living here. It's better. I've been out there and it's no fun out there, but here I really love it. This is my home.
And home for Nathaniel means a place where he can spend his time doing what he really loves, building model airplanes according to real military specifications. His next dream, getting a contract with the military to buy the model planes. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
It was a project many years in the making, but council member Park said he was glad it got finished before the end of his term in office. An inspirational Silver Lake resident is remembered by the city council members and the city of Los Angeles. Rich Samuels has more.
For 47 years, Joseph Gatto brought arts education to generations of young students. He inspired thousands. And he was murdered in November of 2013. On Father's Day, he was honored in the heart of the community he loved.
The city of Los Angeles, in its efforts to recognize great citizens, often picks locations where community gathers, where one maybe at a red light will stop and look at the name and be reflective of who that person is. This man was a great father, a great teacher, and a great artist.
It's our duty as this council to memorialize the life of Joseph Gatto, a man who gave so much to his family, to his community, to many students that he impacted in the art industry.
The fact that his kids went into public service, I think, is no coincidence. I think it's the values that he instilled on them and certainly a great positive impact.
Joseph Gatto is the incredible Renaissance man that I never had the privilege of meeting in person.
Woo! He taught for 47 years in Los Angeles and saved so many lives, inspired so many young people who are doing great things today.
The murder of Joseph Gatto remains unsolved. This is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
Joseph Gatto was one of the founding members of the Los Angeles County High School for the Arts. While an ongoing summer program is helping families stay cool and active, Rasha Goel has more on how Angelenos are celebrating the summer with a splash.
Nothing like cooling down in the summer heat. And now, thanks to the Operation Splash program, which is kicking off its 10th year, kids and adults can learn to swim for free at LA City pools.
Pool safety, having the junior lifeguards, having people learn to swim will prevent unnecessary injuries and deaths this year.
It's done in collaboration with LA City Department of Recreation and Parks, with Kaiser Permanente, one of our great healthcare providers and one of our great partners, and with the LA 84.
Parents are excited about the program.
This is like exercise, it's really good for their arm strength and some leg strength. So I believe it's perfect. I love it. I love that they did that.
This year, Kaiser Permanente Southern California kicked off Operation Splash at Downey Pool in Lincoln Heights by celebrating the Special Olympics and presenting the city of LA's Department of Recreation and Parks Aquatics Division with a $240,000 grant.
I want to take this moment to thank our partners like Kaiser, who for 10 years have been working with us, making sure that over 100,000 children and their families have had access to these pools.
I'd like to also say, like you all to come out and join us this year when we welcome about 7,000 athletes from 177 countries to the swimming events. Everyone here, of course, entering the swimming events, will be held at USC Open Water Swimming in Long Beach for the first time in Special Olympics.
The LA Department of Recreation and Parks aquatic programs have offered Special Olympics programs for over 20 years. Luke Rose, who will be competing this year, has been swimming with Special Olympics for eight years.
I also would like to thank the kids for to cheer on Team USA and let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt.
Regardless of winning or not, it will be a splash of a lifetime. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Special Olympic Games will be held from July 25 through August 2. Well, we recently introduced you to three proposed LA Convention Center designs, all of which seek to revamp the facility. Now we take a closer look at the plans from the architect's perspective. Anna Marcos has more.
LA's convention center is a step closer to getting a total makeover. Three handpicked architectural firms presented plans for what LA's future, bigger, better convention center will look like.
It's not just the exterior, it's not just the interior, it's how it interacts with the existing space. There's many things to look at. So we're here today to listen.
City leaders from the Board of Public Works and the Convention and Tourism Commissions watched and listened as the architects took the floor. The prerequisites, a design plan under $350 million, which includes a million square feet of convention space. LA operates with a fraction of the space of nearby cities like San Diego and Anaheim, and city leaders want LA to compete.
Any one of these three firms is totally capable of doing a fantastic project for the city.
For the firm A.C. Martin L.M.N., a new convention center wasn't just about the extra space, but selling visitors on the vision of LA.
They go up on the terrace and they experience this beautiful dusk sky. The delegate from Minneapolis Instagrams herself and puts up the picture and tells her friends, "Guess what? Look where I am. Wouldn't you like to be here?"
The A.C. Martin plan also included the most dramatic ballroom on top of the convention center. Meanwhile, the Gensler Lehrer firm envisioned a convention center belonging not just to visitors, but to Angelenos. Besides an expanded Gil Lindsay Park, it included built-up space in the corridor along Pico Boulevard.
Every level, from the ground level to the exhibition level to the roof level, is open to the sky, interconnected and brimming with activity.
And the HMC Populous firm featured both an indoor ballroom and a great outdoor ballroom, the hope being that it attracts more outdoor activities and events.
We are the only firm in the world dedicated exclusively to the planning and design of public assembly facilities. Nobody else can make that claim.
In the end, the city engineer chose the HMC Populous project. The city council must now approve the plan before work gets underway. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The new LA Convention Center plan includes space for a high-rise hotel. LA falls far behind other cities in the number of hotel rooms available to accommodate convention guests. While it's known as the crown jewel of the San Fernando Valley, but now the Hanson Dam Recreation Center has even more reason to shine as city officials give it a much-needed polish. The wide-open space at the Hanson Dam Recreation Area is a popular destination among hikers, walkers, cyclists, and joggers. Many say they use the park on a daily basis.
This is like our main park where we come and train for our big races that we do. These guys just ran the LA Marathon. This is what their main camp, where we come and train.
But officials hope to attract even more parkgoers after making some much-needed improvements to the recreation area, which is the second-largest regional park in the city, behind Griffith Park.
Being big means that we have to do everything that we can in the city to make sure that it becomes not just a big park, but one that's available for the entire community to use.
Many parkgoers were concerned because the old parking lot lacked clearly defined parking spaces, causing unsafe conditions. But the Department of Rec and Parks listened to those concerns and addressed them.
Today, we now have a parking lot that is safe for the community.
Community members and city officials unveiled the improvements with a ribbon cutting. The new parking lot now features clearly painted and defined parking and bike spaces, a single entry and exit point with directional arrows, and new fencing and barriers. In addition, a separate walking area from the parking lot was also created to improve access and safety for pedestrians. A new ranger station was also added, as well as new exercise equipment.
Thank you for the great job you guys did in here. It looks much, much nicer.
Councilmember Felipe Fuentes said the goal of the Department of Recreation and Parks is to make sure residents live healthy, happy, and sustainable lifestyles. A new amenity along the LA River. It's a quarter-mile stretch of park space with new paving, signage, and bike trails. And as Gil Reyes reports, plans call for adding even more.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti takes advantage of the LA River's newest bike and pedestrian trail. Valley Heart River Walk Park stretches from Studio City to Sherman Oaks. And the city has plans to add even more park space throughout the river's path.
I'm going to be so excited to raise my daughter in a city linked together by open spaces that will be 20 times longer than Central Park. Think about that for a second. That's how long the LA River is in a city of LA.
Plans are to add River Park amenities from the valley to Long Beach. It's all part of the LA River Revitalization Plan, removing much of the concrete and restoring its natural beauty, while adding features for cyclists, joggers, everyone to enjoy. Councilman Tom Labonge forgot his bike, so he settled for running.
He's going to give me my bike!
This is what it's all about, reclaiming this land. You mentioned Central Park in New York is 980 acres, Griffith Park's 4,500 acres. And now this, the whole lineage is going to be more and more and more.
We can have a park within a half mile of every resident within the city of Los Angeles. That's a huge goal that we have, but we must set goals like that.
As plans for more parks keep rolling along, along the LA River in Sherman Oaks, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The $3.5 million project in Sherman Oaks allows easy access on the north side of the river. While this week we continue our look at City Link LA, an initiative that officials say will help enhance city services by providing high-speed broadband throughout all of LA. This is LA's Emergency Operations Center, a large, open room with the latest state-of-the-art technology. All is quiet now, but when there's a citywide emergency, all hands are on deck. The center becomes the main headquarters for city leaders and department heads as they monitor the situation, plan recovery efforts, and keep Angelenos informed.
Because an informed community, not only is a community that's able to respond, but it's also a community that's able to recover, which makes us overall the resilient city that we strive to be.
But while the city's crisis communications operations are highly advanced, city leaders want to make them even better through a new initiative called City Link LA, a program that will provide high-speed internet and Wi-Fi throughout all of LA. Here at the Emergency Operations Center, officials say that during an emergency, time is their enemy. But they say with high-speed broadband, they'll be able to disseminate critical information to the public even faster.
In terms of moving information out, accurate, substantive, timely information is essential to the public's understanding of what government's doing. Having access to high-speed internet, that just gives us another method to transmit the information.
In addition to strengthening emergency communications, officials say that other city services will also be greatly enhanced. Here at the Central Library in downtown LA, high-speed broadband access will only help advance the library's mission of providing content to all Angelenos.
Greater availability of the internet, you know, greater broadband is huge and very important to the public library. Because when people have that access at home, in their business, at 3 o'clock in the morning, we want them to be downloading books, checking ebooks out from our libraries. We want them to go online and find out about a storytime at the Watts Branch Library. We want them to learn that the public library has classes in how to sign up for Covered California, or to learn about how to become a U.S. citizen, or a financial literacy program, or all the other great things that we do.
Community advocates say city residents who live in working-class and immigrant communities will receive the greatest benefit of high-speed broadband because many of them just don't have access to the internet.
Any opportunity to bring high-speed broadband to our neighborhoods at little or no cost to residents would be a sort of new way to access city services and a new and bigger way to access information and resources that affect communities and families of color.
All this access that officials say will go a long way in bridging that digital divide. City officials have issued a request for proposal and are now accepting bids from interested internet providers. While the new Fast and Furious Ride at Universal Studios is certainly heating up the summer and social media, here's more on the ride's opening day in This Week in Tweets. There was plenty of heart-pumping action on the Universal lot as the studio debuted its Fast and Furious Ride, supercharged in true Hollywood fashion.
It's now open!
Ready, set, go, Universal Studios tweeted. #FastFuriousRide now open at Universal Studios Hollywood. Yahoo Movies tweeted a pic of one of the movie stars, Michelle Rodriguez, posting the super-cool M. Rod official making her way down the red carpet. Universal tweeted a pic with stars Vin Diesel and Tyrese Gibson with his daughter, tweeting "Picture-perfect moment with Vin Diesel at Tyrese and his daughter." The studio also tweeted a pic of the car in midair, posting "We put the pedal to the metal. #FastFuriousRide grand opening event." Universal is currently celebrating its 50th anniversary of its famed studio tour. And that's a look at This Week in Tweets. While the city takes a major step in reducing its carbon footprint, a city council member is recognized for his support of community organizations, and skateboarders have reason to be stoked as the very first skate park opens up in Council District 3. These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti has signed an agreement to sell off the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's share in the Navajo coal-fired energy plant in Arizona, a move that brings the city closer to ending its dependence on coal energy. The agreement calls for the city to start purchasing renewable geothermal power instead. Officials say the sale of Navajo will reduce LA's greenhouse gas emissions by the equivalent of 1 million cars over the next 3 and 1/2 years. The action will also put LA DWP on a path to end power deliveries from the plant by mid-2016, about 3 and 1/2 years ahead of the date mandated by state legislation. Councilmember Mitchell Englander was honored recently by Valley Village for his continued commitment to LA organizations that are devoted to supporting people with developmental challenges. The barbecue took place during Valley Village's summer fundraiser at Orchid Ranch in West Hills. Folks mingled, took plenty of photos, and as you can see here, enjoyed great food. Valley Village continually serves the housing needs of more than 400 men and women with developmental challenges. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield and other city leaders helped the community inaugurate the Lenark Skate Plaza, a brand-new 14,000-square-foot street-style skate park at Lenark Recreation Center in Canoga Park. Blumenfield said the Lenark Skate Plaza will be a great place for kids to stay active, learn a sport, and do it in a way that is safe and fun. The skate park is the first to be built west of the Supulveda Basin and features a poured-in-place street plaza with rails, ledges, and transitions. Lenark Recreation Center was identified as a potential skate park site by the Department of Rec and Parks in 2008. Los Angeles City Council, Mayor Eric Garcetti, and city attorney Mike Fuhr bid farewell to councilmember Tom Labonge as he steps down after four decades of public service. Among several heartfelt remarks about the impact Labonge has had on the city, the mayor also highlighted Labonge's signature style.
He taught me how to always go like this at the end of a press conference. He taught me how to take a guy and just go like this the whole time and shove him here. Everybody's had the Tom where he's like, "You know, and this guy's great, and here, here." By the end, you got to go to the doctor to get work on your shoulder.
Labonge, with his family by his side, received a certificate for his service, along with plenty of hugs and remarks from his colleagues. The packed ceremony concluded with photos and a standing ovation. Labonge leaves office at the end of June. The Los Angeles Zoo has set aside one special night to celebrate its connection with Angelenos, and one special Angeleno from the city family was honored. Rich Samuels has more.
It's been called one of LA's biggest and most popular fundraisers. It's brought in more than $1 million every year for the LA Zoo. With more than 800 attendees and a star-studded cast, the Beastly Ball returned this June for its 45th year.
The Beastly Ball is the time we celebrate every year, the importance of the zoo to the community, and also celebrate some of the people that have helped us in our work towards our mission.
To be able to take your family through a beautiful piece of property like this and see all these interesting, wonderful animals, but then to learn something.
It's the best night of the year. You just get to take a wonderful tour of our zoo, meet a lot of the animals, and we have so many amazing food sponsors are here.
Amongst those honored this year, actor philanthropist Lance Bass and one very special longtime supporter.
Tonight, in particular, we're thanking Councilman Labonge for the number of years that, as a councilman, but also as a city staffer, the support that he's provided for the LA Zoo.
You've given me a little bit of honor, which I'm very thankful for, because I love the zoo, and I hope you do too.
Tom understands the importance of the zoo, not only to District 4, but to the entire city, making a difference in kids' lives, making a difference in the public's life, but also the conservation work that we do worldwide.
But just because Tom Labonge is leaving council, he won't be disappearing from the zoo.
I'll certainly be supportive of the zoo forever and always.
From Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
Tom Labonge has been an LA Zoo advocate for more than 14 years. Well, if you're planning on celebrating the Fourth of July in true American fashion, we've got you covered with plenty of fireworks festivities. Here are some things to do. If you're on the hunt for a cheap, lively way to celebrate Uncle Sam, shake it over to Grand Park on Saturday, July 4, and watch downtown LA live up for free. This Fourth of July, Grand Park hosts a unique block party, featuring scrumptious food trucks fair, live music, and of course, fireworks. The music begins while the sun is still high in the sky, so grab your best friends, the family, and enjoy a bit of togetherness under the beautiful Angeleno sky. Your four-legged friends are totally invited. Grand Park is the place to celebrate together with music, food, and an incredible fireworks display launched from the Civic Center skyline. The event begins at 3:00 PM. Grand Park is located at 200 North Grand Avenue. For more, visit grandparkla.org. Fourth of July celebrations wouldn't be complete without a parade, right? So head on over to the 67th Annual Pacific Palisades Fourth of July Parade, the highlight of every Fourth of July in the area. The parade has grown to be one of the top Independence Day parades in the entire U.S. So come join your neighbors and enjoy the best bands and equestrian units in the country, marching alongside community groups, local celebrities, neighbors, and kids. The 2015 parade theme is Palisades Parade: Pride, Passion, Patriotism. The parade route is on Sunset Boulevard between Villa de la Paz and Drummond Streets in Pacific Palisades. The festivities begin at 2:00 PM. More details can be found at palisadesparade.org. There's something about watching fireworks over the ocean. Every year in Marina Del Rey, fireworks explode over the Marina Channel, and spectators gather all over to watch. Celebrate the holiday in Marina Del Rey with a spectacular fireworks show over the water. Fireworks are shot from a barge across the marina's main channel, lighting up the night sky and water below. Depending upon weather and cloud cover on the night of the show, the fireworks can usually be seen throughout the marina and from the waterfront side of most hotels, restaurants, beaches, apartments, and anchorages. You may be able to get a glimpse of the fireworks from as far as Playa del Rey and Venice Beach Pier. Popular locations to watch the fireworks are Fisherman's Village, Burton Chase Park, and Marina Beach. The show begins at 9:00 PM and lasts approximately 20 minutes. For more details, go to visitmarinadelrey.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Ken from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Hey, hey buddy! You with the stupid hat! Come here, closer! No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally! And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called!
Hey, look out for the pothole!
Don't worry Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 30. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Banda Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Corret, Corcoran, Labonge, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, 10 members present a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corcoran moves correct, seconds next.
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Sadio moves, Wezar seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, Mr. Labonge, lead us in your last flag salute. Mr. Labonge, all rise, all rise for the flag salute.
All rise. When the North Hollywood Senior Lead Officers come up here right now, real quick. Let me just do it. I'm right now, one second. They're going to leave, they're going to leave, because I never let them see the flag.
The best-laid plans, Mr.
Members, joined by the North Hollywood Senior Lead Officers who serve us so well in these United States of America, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Justin, go. Okay, let's go through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, there's requests for member to continue items 1I and K.
Without objection, that'd be the order.
That's 1I and K to July 29, items 7 and 78 to July 28, and 72 to July 28, and item 46 to September 1.
Fine. Let's move on to the next section.
Items 1 through 3 are items known for public care, and the Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1A, B, and C may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, so cards.
Cards on items 1N and number 2.
Okay, let's hold that. Vote on the remainder. Remainder, let's open the roll. On Mr. Sadio.
Separate matter, Mr. President. I observed in the back of the chambers our former colleague and I believe Assistant Majority Leader Alberto Torrico.
Yeah, give Albert a round of applause. Let's prepare to vote on these items.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's also requests to continue items 1B and O to July 31.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, next section.
Items 4, items 4 through 56 are items which public care is have been held.
Okay, I don't see any specials. Mr. Ofero?
35 special.
Hold it for 35. No, Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we hold items 31 and 47? If we can hear them together, it'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, there's requests to refer items 6 back to Public Safety Committee. That item was continued in Public Safety Committee.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we continue item 46 for 60 days, please?
Okay, where would that bring us, Madam Clerk?
That's September 1.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order. Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call item 45 special.
Let's hold that. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Oh wait, not been informed, we need to hold 19, 20, 48, and 49. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we're going to vote on item 48. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. LeBange.
So, forthwith on 55?
13 ayes.
We did 55?
Okay, we have the votes in. Now we'll go forthwith on 55, Mr. O'Farrell.
Also forthwith on 33.
Forthwith on 33, Mr. Englander?
Yeah, just reconsideration for a revote on 9.
Okay, why don't you... We'll bring that up later. Let's continue to go through the agenda. That brings us where? Madam Clerk?
Items 57 through 78 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Cards on what?
Cards on items 57A and D.
Let's hold that and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Item 57D, continue for two weeks, please.
I think we already voted on that.
Okay, so...
No, we didn't vote on it.
We didn't?
No.
50... Wait, I'm confused. Oh, it's being held? Okay.
57D.
So we're good.
Thank you.
So that would be continued to July 28th.
Let's move to the next item. Items? I didn't hear you, Mr. LeBange.
Forthwith on historic monument Dante Zio in Griffith Park, please.
All right, that'll be the order. What do we have?
Items 79 through 83 are closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
What we'll do is I'll look to Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. All of these matters have been considered by Budget and Finance. 79 through 83, 82 are approvals of settlement which can be voted on in open session unless members have questions. And number 83 also, Budget and Finance agrees with the recommendations of the City Attorney, and that can be voted on in public as well.
Okay, so... Okay, Patrice, let's read the items. Let's prepare to vote on those items.
For item 79, in the case entitled William Kaplan et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to pay a total of $500,000 in settlement. For item 80, in the case entitled Ashley Solomon versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to pay the proposed settlement, as recommended by the City Attorney. Doesn't even say. For item 81, in the case entitled Kamisha Davison versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to pay a total settlement in the amount of $500,000. And for item 82, in the case entitled Mary Tatum versus Stephen Moody and Robert Polito, the recommendation is to pay a total of $250,000 in settlement.
Okay, then no speakers on the Q. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's move to... Is it item 84?
Yes, item 84. On the supplemental agenda, item 84 is an item noted for public hearing.
Any cards?
No cards.
Okay, then let's prepare to vote on this item as well. No, I think we have one card on 84. So let's move to the next set of items.
Items 85 and 86 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members, I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 87 through 99 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have any cards?
Yes, cards on items 87, 90, 93, and 99.
Let's hold those items, Mr. Kocorian.
Mr. President, 89, please, for purposes of a technical amendment.
I think we... Didn't we hold 89? Well, let's hold that. And...
Correction on the motion, I'm sorry.
98? We're going to hold 91 for the request of Mr. Price. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to items called special or presentations.
Mr. President?
Mr. Weezer?
97, forthwith, please.
97, forthwith. Okay, now we'll go quickly to item 84. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Please come forward and stay, Mr. Walsh. I'm going to call off several of your items. Go ahead.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns the Tourism Marketing District, number 84, and they had a hearing establishment of a tourist marketing district. More money spent, less money for the sidewalks. Tourists, I just want to say, come to L.A., please, but bring a bulletproof vest. You'll be raped and robbed on Hollywood Boulevard, and we have a rape epidemic. And we're not going to find out from the Los Angeles Marketing District about the rape epidemic on Hollywood Boulevard, which means we shouldn't even have this tourism district. The only way you'll find out about how harmful it is to tourists and how they're being raped is to go to my Twitter account, @HollywoodDems, and we list police reports on every rape in the past year on Hollywood Boulevard.
Thank you. On this item, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. Walsh?
13 ayes.
Please stay at the podium. Now we're on item 87, called special by you. Mr. Walsh, come on.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. We've got 100 items on this agenda.
No, stay on the subject.
This is the appointment of Mr. Jeremy Bernard to the Board of Convention and Tourism Development Commissions. Incidentally, we checked to find out on all of your appointees whether they have a history of child porn, because remember, when I upset... One of your previous appointees is now in prison for possession of child porn. We're very happy to say that Mr. Jeremy Bernard is only guilty of giving the mayor a lot of campaign money. He's not in any way involved in the distribution or the possession of child pornography, which one of your appointees... See, they can't deny it. One of your appointees of the previous mayor was, in fact, up to his backside in child pornography. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, members, no one on the Q. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, number 90?
Number 90 is the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. I would like to know how Genesee Center got this contract. There's about 150 organizations that are involved in fighting domestic violence. In fact, I'm sure that it's because they're politically connected, and I'm sure it's because they're predominantly run by white people. And in fact, we get all the domestic violence of crime on Crime Mapping L.A. Go to Crime Mapping L.A. We have... This is proof. An absolute flood of domestic violence in this city. And it isn't wives beating up husbands, folks. It's what it really is is violence towards women, and they're not going to say a damn word up here because they're too busy celebrating their marriage vows to worry about women who are being violated and raped by their husbands. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, don't move, Mr. Walsh. Members, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, item 93.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Another phony contract for domestic violence, this one. 93 concerns... This is important. These are the leftover redevelopment projects. Remember, we fought... I fought since the early 1970s in Berkeley against the redevelopment project. We were told, "You're wasting your time. It will always be there. They'll throw dirt and shovel dirt in your face." In fact, we took out the redevelopment project. Now you're in charge of these programs here to close it out, because you can't just throw away the contracts you signed with redevelopment. Redevelopment was horrible. Redevelopment is disgusting, and we got rid of redevelopment. The angry white guys did, including me. We got rid of redevelopment, community redevelopment, but we're still paying off billions of dollars in their debt. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, don't go anywhere. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
99, Mr. Walsh?
99 is the worst you have up here. Now, I understand that reporters, especially male reporters, they flirt with the mayor, so they're not going to do anything that makes the mayor look bad. This concerns... We're spending our money on a fireworks car at the LAPD. Now, the LAPD has got dirt on every one of you and is blackmailing all of you.
Stay on the item. Stay on the item.
Fireworks car. How much are we spending on an LAPD fireworks car? And why won't you ask the LAPD? If it isn't because they've blackmailing you from your boyfriends and your girlfriends and whatever else?
Stay on the subject.
What is a fireworks car? I ask. And why do we need it? Some cities have it legalized, but here the cops get bribes for allowing fireworks.
You're not on the subject.
What is a fireworks car? What is a fireworks car?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And sergeants, we're getting our usual disruption from Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, take this as a warning. Now we'll go to item 2. Mr. Walsh is out of time. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. LeBange, you said you're comfortable with item 98?
Yes, thank you very much. And thank the city clerk, too small, typey there. On my part.
All right, let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item 1. On item 1, I have Hector Sandoval and Deborah. Deborah, I cannot make out the last name. Maybe you could just come and pronounce it for me. Please come forward. Please. We need translation.
I only have here my letter. With the amount of $1,996.49. I did bank chapter 7 in bankruptcy. And I want to know if you are going to raise this debt or if you are going to adjust it for a better price. Because I don't have enough money.
Continue.
Continuing. This is it.
I'm going to ask Felipe if you could have a staff member...
I believe it's District 7. That's what his letter says.
So why don't we go to... You want to just continue this piece? Why don't we continue this item, Patrice or Madam Clerk, until we come back? And when would that be?
It'd be July 28th.
Okay. Now I think we still have one other person.
And for the record, Mr. President, that item was item 1N. That'd be continued to July 28th.
That item was 1N?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'm a little confused. Can you identify yourself?
I'm Deborah Danielleann.
And what item are you here on?
1N for 12039 West Branford Street.
Go ahead.
There's a lien being placed on the property, so I just wanted this matter continued for four weeks if possible.
Well, why don't... If you could go over to my left side and speak to... Well, okay, we'll continue your item, but your counsel person is right over there, Mr. Fuentes. And so that item, if we continue it for two weeks, will leave us where?
To July 28th. That's item 1N.
Okay, so without objection?
And the previous item was item 1F, which was continued to July 28th.
All right, so let's move on. Mr. O'Farrell, you want to do item 35? I believe you called that special?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Colleagues, it's very important that the city continue to promote the enforcement of existing laws which prohibit the sales of tobacco products to minors. It was brought to light earlier this year that with 4,768 tobacco retailers within the city, minors in Los Angeles were still able to access tobacco products to the tune of 24%, which is way, way, way out of step with the state rate of minors being able to access tobacco to the tune of about 7%, which informed us that we have a lot of ground to cover in terms of effective enforcement and prevention of sale to dangerous tobacco products to our minors, and it really is a public health threat. So on February 18th, the City Council approved my motion, co-signed and seconded by our colleagues Nury Martinez, Bernard Parks, and Paul Corretts, requesting the City Attorney to draft an ordinance to really fix the deficiencies in enforcement, and we've done just that with this item. And it brings us really to the scale of what other municipalities across the state of California is doing, and it is my belief that there's no greater effort that we can make than to protect the health of our youth and make sure that we really discourage the use of tobacco sales and the use of tobacco to our minors. So it is in that spirit that we're moving forward with this, and I want to really call out a special thank you to Robert Donan of the American Heart Association, who is here today, who we worked with hand in hand along the way, and also city attorneys who worked on this case in crafting this very well-worded ordinance, Selena Porras, David Michelson, and Nora Manzanilla, who provided us with that detailed report that we are considering now. We had a very, very in-depth discussion at my Arts Parks Committee hearing just earlier, and it was approved unanimously. And if there are no questions that anyone has, I would urge an eye vote on this very, very important ordinance so that we can really put a dent in that unacceptable percentage we have of access to tobacco products to our minors and our youth in the city of Los Angeles. I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see what we can do on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Kocorian, you want to quickly dispense with item 89?
The amendment has not yet been circulated, but as soon as it has been, we'd like to do that.
Okay, then I'm going to move to Buscaino. Mr. Buscaino?
Which one?
Are you ready with... Was it 31? No?
3147?
Corretz, 45. Item 45.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, and I don't know if there's staff that can speak to this item that are here, Mr. President? Do we have staff that can speak to this item?
Do we have staff? In fact, Mr., then let's hold that, Mr. Corretts.
Let's hold it until someone is present that can answer questions.
Okay, well, I think I see the staff.
And I just had one brief question. I wanted to know if the Westfield concessions agreement includes following the Good Food Purchasing Program guidelines, which is required of every city contract?
Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airports. The Westfield contract itself does not, but Westfield's agreements with their subcontractors, the ones that actually do the food procurement and the food sales, those agreement, the policy gets pushed through to them and it is implemented at that level.
So it is implemented by this contract?
By the subcontractors, yes.
Great. Thank you. That's my only question, otherwise I would ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. Mr. Englander, Mr. Englander. Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the door, I mean, open the door. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now we're gonna take up eight items. Is it nineteen and twenty together? Or do we need to take them up separately? Okay, let's take up item nineteen. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now we'll take up item twenty. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Are we ready?
Okay, now let's vote on reconsideration. On item nine, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Okay, so on item nine, we're gonna take up item nine, Mr. Englander. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
For item nine, the ordinance says we'll carry over until July twenty-eighth for second reading.
So we're gonna vote on reconsideration for item one K. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Alan Swartz. Alan Swartz, please come forward. Do we have Alan Swartz? I do not see, I do not see Mr. Sw- Members, is anybody ready on items thirty-one, forty-seven, forty-nine, fifty-seven, eighty-nine, or ninety-one? Let me know. Mr. Swartz? Okay, I'm gonna, um... Mr. Fuentes for a brief introduction. Mr. Swartz, please come forward. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, colleagues. As we're waiting to continue our business, I want to remind you that summer is officially here. There's extreme heat. That's why our Recreation and Parks Department is partnering with Seven-Eleven. On July seventh, families will be able to enjoy a free swim day in the city of Los Angeles. Most of them throughout the San Fernando Valley will be packed, but Seven-Eleven wrote a check to Recreation and Parks for twenty-five thousand dollars so that ten thousand children and their families can cool off. I think there's a representative from Seven-Eleven and Rec and Parks. Please stand up. Thank you for your generosity. Give them a big round of applause. Dennis Francis, Marketing Manager for Seven-Eleven, and our fantastic Vicky Israel, Assistant Dental Manager of Rec and Parks. Thank you, Seven-Eleven. I'll make more announcements at the end about how people can swim for free, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Now we will go to Mr. Swartz. Welcome, sir. Welcome.
Hi. So do I start?
Yes. Just relax.
You know, this is a new experience to me.
It's okay.
It's a first. I had an inspector show up at my home. And just to let you know, I am deaf. You know, we continued, the inspector was deaf, and we continued talking, and this is my roommate. The gentleman here saying that the interpreter is not interpreting correctly. Well, this is my ex-roommate. Anyways, he asked for help. He has, you know, he has, we have effective communication. So the person who showed up, the man who showed up was very aggressive. And I asked to, for interpreters to be provided. So next time I come, you know, the last time I came, there was no interpreters. So this is the example I'm showing of my communication, you know? So that's how I was communicating with the man who was trying to talk to me. So same, that way, you may not understand me without an interpreter. The gentleman didn't understand me at that point. So he jumped over my fence and started taking pictures, and I was extremely nervous. I felt anxious. I went to make plates to the office, but there's still no interpreter there. And I felt very frustrated. You know, I haven't paid anything and I have no idea what's going on with the communication.
He's missing words. This guy, this interpreter is missing most of the communication.
Please speak into the mic.
So, this appointment, my fourth appointment, there was still no interpreter. Clearly, I'm very frustrated, fed up, and I just can't continue this process. And now I come here four times with no interpreter. Well, the second time, there was no interpreter. The third one, there was not successful communication, and now here I am the fourth time. So I would like the council to understand about how frustrated I am with the communication access, especially with the inspector. And that's why I wasn't paying until I can actually resolve this communication issue after such time. Then I would actually work to resolve the issue. My witness is here to my left. So I'm asking you to please waive this and to start the process all over again.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now let's proceed. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item eighty-nine, Mr. Kocorian? And thirty-seven, fourth with, item eighty-nine? I believe it has been circulated.
If it's been circulated, it's a technical amendment. Mr. President, I'd ask for an eye vote.
Okay, we'll hold that. Why don't we go to your presentation if you're ready, Mr. Kocorian? That was my mistake. My mistake. Would you like to do your presentation?
If, your pleasure.
Then you go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's an honor for me to be joined today by members of the International Criminal Court Alliance, as we're coming together today to declare July seventeenth World Day for International Justice in Los Angeles, as we have year after year here. In nineteen ninety-eight, in the aftermath of the Rwandan and Bosnian genocides, the global community came together to try to take some tangible steps to finally make real the cry that we've heard so often through the twentieth century, "Never again." The global community decided there had been too many instances of genocide, war crimes, crimes against humanity, and other atrocities where there was no formal response from the international community and no mechanism by which to achieve any measure of justice. And because of that, the International Criminal Court was established to help end impunity for the perpetrators of the most serious crimes against humanity. The ICC continues to stand as a beacon of hope for people, downtrodden people throughout the world, when their national governments failed to protect their own citizens. Since its establishment, the ICC has worked to protect civilians from grave crimes and increase their access to justice. The ICC continues to be instrumental in creating a global discussion on justice in the wake of human rights violations in countries around the world where human rights are too often not highly regarded. As we all know, the city of Los Angeles stands as a beacon of hope to many of those people. And we have communities here, large communities of victims and survivors of the Holocaust, survivors and their descendants of the Armenian genocide, large numbers of Cambodian immigrants who went through the atrocities under Pol Pot, and many other communities that have experienced these sorts of atrocities, Sri Lankans, Guatemalans, Africans, Syrians, and so many others who've experienced these kinds of atrocities and have felt that they didn't have an avenue to justice and have come here to find refuge and solace here in the city of Los Angeles. Well, the International Criminal Court finally gives them that measure of justice, and I'm very pleased to be able to be joined here by Sean Butler, the co-chair of the International Criminal Court Alliance, who would like to say a few words about the work of the ICC and its alliance. Sean?
Thank you very much. Please remember three points about the International Criminal Court. Number one, don't let the numbers fool you. Number two, the world still needs the ICC to bring perpetrators of atrocity to justice. Number three, the ICC still needs all of us. I'm gonna go through each one of them in a little bit more detail. Don't let the numbers fool you. The victims are still individuals. The ICC deals with mass atrocities, genocide, crimes against humanity, and war crimes. Those include the use of child soldiers and rape as a policy of conflict. There may be tens of thousands of direct victims and hundreds of thousands of displaced persons, but the impact on each victim remains a tragedy for an individual only multiplied. Those victims are fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, sons, and daughters. They bleed the same color of blood as we do. Don't let the magnitude of the numbers fool you. Don't let the miles away diminish the need. Don't be fooled by the numbers. These are highness crimes, and the perpetrators should not escape justice. Number two, the world still needs the ICC to bring perpetrators of these atrocities to justice. The crimes continue in the twenty-first century, and a culture of impunity remains. The ICC acts only if there is no national or other judicial system able and genuinely willing to investigate or prosecute. All situations before the court are for conduct after July of two thousand and two. The United Nations has referred two situations, Libya and Darfur, to the ICC. Sadly, the world still needs the ICC. The ICC needs all of us. The ICC has no police force and relies on cooperation of nations to obtain custody of the accused, to allow access by prosecution investigators, and to provide evidence. It was a known weakness when the treaty was negotiated. Without the cooperation of nations, those accused can evade justice like Omar al-Bashir of Sudan has, even though he's been charged with the crime of genocide for the conduct in Darfur. All nations should be party to the Rome Treaty that created the ICC. The support of Los Angeles is significant. Los Angeles is home to survivors of the situations before the ICC. The ICC needs people everywhere to show support for all nations, including the U.S., to become parties to the treaty. We're living in times of historic change. The ICC marks a change from impunity to accountability. Your support is shown by continuing to pass these resolutions. Don't let the numbers fool you. The world still needs the ICC, and the ICC needs all of us, and we thank you for your continuing support. If there's anything I can answer your questions, I'd be happy to try. Oh, and I'd like to introduce our participants here. Kathy Emanuel.
Wave when he calls your name.
Okay. Kathy Emanuel, Shereen Arshadi, Farzad Hassan, Cyrus Penizar, Bruce Yowitz, Jim Stanbury, and I'm Sean Butler.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Sean. And to all of you, I want to congratulate you and thank you for the work that you do each and every day for people who look to us for a little bit of hope. And I'm proud to be able to present you with this resolution, signed by all the members of the city council, declaring World Day for International Justice in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate it.
Let's move to item forty-nine.
And Mr. President, for item forty-nine, a amended motion forty-nine A has been circulated.
So let's vote on the, as amended, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Previn, item eighty-nine. Mr. Previn, are you here?
Thank you, oh, sorry. Okay, thank you, Council President Wesson. It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And item sixty-six is a Bloomfield Englander item, which is going to make it for permit- And item sixty-six is a Bloomingfield Englander item, which is going to make it for permit to homeless folks who sleep in their car, which I find...
Mr. Previn, we're on item eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
Yes, that's what I called you up. I had a card for you on item eighty-nine.
Sir, did you approve a bunch of items before presentations today?
No, Mr. Previn.
It's very confusing.
This is item eighty-nine.
I got it. Eighty-nine is a grant for seventy-five thousand to a very nice organization based in Glendale that administers something like forty-five thousand doses of social services, I noticed on their website. Thank you, Mr. Kukorian, for doing that. It is a very nice way to deploy HUD money, and I very much appreciate it. But I'm still a teeny bit baffled, sir.
No, you're on item eighty-nine. If you're finished with eighty-nine.
Sir, I'm familiar with eighty-nine, but fifty-nine was the one I was interested in.
No, anyway, his time has expired. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll.
And this... Excuse me, Mr. President, this vote is on whether to substitute.
Okay, the first vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now let's actually vote on it. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Englander, are you ready for your presentation? Mr. Fuentes. The floor is yours, Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, yesterday was amazing. And today, it's my honor to recognize the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission. As we all know, on May third, two thousand and fourteen, just before 1:00 a.m., a fire broke out at the mission. The thrift store was devastated, the warehouse was devastated, fleet of vehicles completely devastated. Twenty families were left homeless. I got the call at the wee hours in the morning that we had women and children barefoot with barely the shirt on their back. The fire broke out in Mr. Kukorian's district. And yesterday, we opened a ninety-bed, brand-new, sixteen-thousand-square-foot facility in Northridge in my district, now the largest homeless shelter in the San Fernando Valley. I want to thank the Engine Company eighty-nine, as well as Captain Reynolds and all those firefighters, the first on scene. While we lost the buildings and the structure, they saved the lives of those who lost everything. And there were no lives lost. Despite the devastating fire, the mission was still focused on serving throughout this entire transition. Through this crises, they actually served fifteen thousand meals, and they restored dignity of six thousand six hundred and eighty-eight homeless individuals, threw showers, cleaned clothes, and provided seven mobile locations. The funding and the pathway to self-sufficiency at three mission-run thrift stores continued. And in fact, it was the Valley Council members, and I want to thank and single them out specifically, Councilmember Paul Coretts, Councilmember Paul Kukorian, who really led the effort of all the Valley Council members and helped put this together, Councilmembers Tom Labonge and Nuri Martinez, as well as Bob Bloomingfield and Felipe Fuentes, who... We all came together. I couldn't be more proud of what we did, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a moment. But first, I want to go ahead and show you the video. If we can go ahead and roll the video. Thank you.
...families become homeless each year. And as a result, there are currently over one point six million homeless children in the United States. Today, one in forty-five children in America experience homelessness. These children are four times more likely to show delayed development, are sick four times more often than other children, go hungry at twice the rate of other children, and have three times the normal rate of emotional and behavioral problems. L.A. County alone is home to about eighty thousand homeless people, and it's estimated that one-third of that population is made up by families. These children are hidden from our view, living in shelters, cars, and campgrounds. They are young and scared, and their parents and families are frustrated and desperate. Homelessness has many faces: intact families, single dads, single moms, addiction, abuse, mental illness, the cycle of poverty, situational homelessness, and countless other situations. But there is hope. At San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, our roots run deep through forty years of serving the homeless population in Southern California. We change lives for the better by working with the whole person, body, mind, and soul. We enhance dignity by providing food, clothing, and hygiene. We provide safety by offering shelter. We offer hope through life recovery and community sustainability through our thrift stores. And now our biggest vision yet: Home Again, a new family shelter with ninety beds for families, because every kid needs a safe place to hang their backpack.
It was mentioned in the video that eighty thousand people, families, are homeless in the county of Los Angeles. Eighty thousand. Thirty thousand are school-aged children that are homeless. Over fifty percent of the people the Rescue Mission serves are under the age of twelve. I'm going to share that again. Fifty percent, half of the homeless residents here locally, that the Rescue Mission serves are under the age of twelve. Established forty years ago, the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission began serving meals to Valley homeless with the Rescue Survival Outreach Services SOS program and was officially founded in nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand and two, the mission launched the Family Shelter Program, a collaborative effort with the San Fernando Valley and area churches. And today, the mission's SOS program serves an average of fifteen hundred men, women, and children, and continually provides over fifteen hundred meals, three hundred showers, and four hundred hygiene kits. Let me just share this with you, what happened, and we shared and talked about this a little yesterday. What was extraordinary about this, Madam President...
Go ahead.
Was, when we've got people that are homeless on our streets, in our city, and in our county, these are people that have lost everything. They've lost their pride, Mr. Price. They've lost their dignity, Mr. O'Farrell. They've lost their emotion, their willingness to survive, their willingness... And they have essentially given up because they've lost everything. Imagine losing everything and finally having the courage at some point to pull yourself up by the bootstraps and even ask for help. You're a single mom, you're on the street with your kids, and you're asking for help. You go to the last resort. There's no other help. There's no other family. You've done the couch surfing, you lived in the garages, maybe your car. And now you're at a rescue mission, asking for a meal, asking for a roof over your head. And then you've lost that because of a fire. Where do you go from there? This city, along with its corporate sponsors, its local organizations, its grassroots movement, this city stepped up, this council stepped up, organizations, nonprofits, and business leaders locally stepped up and raised the three million towards the six million dollar capital campaign. And yesterday, we cut the ribbon on the ninety-bed facility in Northridge. Colleagues, on a personal note, and I shared a little bit yesterday on this, I know what it's like to lose a home. I know what it's like to be one of those kids where mom says, "We have to pack what you can carry. We have to leave the home because we can't afford to keep it anymore." I know what it's like to go move into a relative's house and sleep on the couch and lose that too. I know what it's like to have opportunities and organizations and nonprofits help you and provide for you. I wouldn't be here without them. I couldn't be more proud of this city and the community and business leaders to step up and help others. We are living today in a crisis. We should declare a war on homelessness. We should declare a state of emergency on homelessness. But today, we celebrate the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission and what they've done with all of your help. And without further ado, I'd like to thank, from the bottom of my heart, Wade Trimmer, Executive Director, and Stacy Miller, who called me, I was one of the very first phone calls that morning, to say, "We need shoes, we need towels, we need soap for kids. We don't even have shoe sizes. Just get everything you can get in every size will make them fit. Get socks, get underwear, get blankets." Paul Kukorian shared a story yesterday that after he walked through the charred walls of the mission and the wreckage and the havoc, that he was able to actually pick up some of the artwork that was Scotch taped to the walls that survived and found a couple stuffed animals and other personal belongings of some of the children and bring it back to those kids. And I was really touched by that, the compassion and the humanity that we all have to bring to this job every single day and outside the job, and what that must have been like to meet with those families and those kids and give that back to them, that little piece of faith or hope of what it meant to them. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Wade and ask him to share a few words as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here today. When we called this project Home Again, we had no idea that the mission itself would end up homeless due to a fire. And yesterday, we came home again. So I want to thank this council. I think that the quality and integrity of any people group is best measured by how they take care of their most vulnerable citizens. And I think that this council and this city shows, continues to show, quality and integrity in the way that we take care of those who are most vulnerable, women and children and men who are experiencing homelessness. Thank you so much for your support, and thank you for letting me continue to be a part of this work.
Mr. Englander, we have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I remember when I first heard about this, and I'm sure it was like this for every Valley Council member, it was like a punch in the gut. We were so shocked that this critical mission that helped so many people lost their shelter, lost their fleet, lost everything. And we were at first just grateful to the firefighters who put out the blaze and made sure that everybody was safe. And we were equally as grateful to the folks that run the mission for not saying, "Okay, we're out of luck, we just have to stop," but for never stopping for a second and helping the most needy. So we all appreciate that. And all the little gestures, large and small, I know everyone in the council called business people and asked, and one of the people my office contacted was Damian Lewis at Universal Nissan, and we asked for money, and he said, "Well, we won't just give some money, we'll actually loan you a truck for a year," which was a great gesture. And all those gestures, large and small, really made it possible to get to this point that we're at now, which is so exciting. This is such a great moment to get back on track and have your facility back. So I want to congratulate you and just thank you for everything you've done. Thank everybody that's helped, and particularly Mitch and Paul and my other Valley colleagues. I think everybody in the Valley came through, and we're so glad that you're back up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mitch, and Wade and Stacy for being here. You know, when the flames were still leaping into the sky at the mission last May, Councilmember Martinez was the first one on the scene. She saw the fire as it was burning, as people were still being brought out of the Rescue Mission, and she leapt into action and got on the phone right away. It's on the border of our districts. She thought it was her district, but she brought me in as well, and it became a team effort of every Valley member from that moment forward. And I got to say, as Mitch has spoken eloquently to, this was an example of how we should operate as a council and as a city, because it was an amazing outpouring of support for the families who were at the depths of hopelessness already and then made even more hopeless by this fire. The embrace that this city gave to those families was inspiring, and it was effective because that started the ball rolling to get us to the point that we are now with the new, improved, expanded facility that we have today. And I want to congratulate Mitch Englander because this facility has gone up in his district with a lot of his leadership in trying to bring the pieces together and get through the land use process and get through all the difficulties of City Hall. It's not easy to do, and it's especially not easy to do for a homeless shelter. And that's the point that I want to just touch on today, because, members, we have homeless populations in every corner of this city, every one of our districts, and every one of us needs to work to provide homes for them in our districts. It shouldn't be an issue where we continue to move people who are homeless to downtown or to Venice or to other places. We have to house people where they are. Now, we're making great success in solving veterans homelessness, and by the end of this year, we will have eliminated veterans homelessness in this city, and that's terrific. But, folks, that's the easy part because it's popular. It's not so popular, and it's not so easy when you get to other parts of the homeless community, and it gets to be hard. It gets to be hard to lead this through. And, you know, the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission should be an example of what each of us can do in each part of the city, because we'll solve homeless veteran... We'll solve the problem of homeless veterans, but that's not going to solve the problem of homeless families, of homeless children who are still living out on our street. And the only way we're going to do that is by investing more in permanent supportive housing, building more shelters, building more affordable housing, and that's going to depend upon each of us to be willing to go into our communities and say, "You know what? You've got nothing to fear. And just go and have a look at the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission. Go look at what that is. Go look at how it looks like from the street. Take a walk through there. See the families living together in this beautiful environment, ordinary families who just don't happen to have a home." And then it'll be much easier for each of us to be able to go to our communities and say, "Let's solve this problem together. Let's come together and continue to be the kind of city that demonstrates the heart and the generosity that we demonstrated in the aftermath of that fire." So thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Wade and Stacy, for all you've done, not only for the families who are living in the mission or will be living in the mission right now, but for setting the bar for what we can do throughout this city if we just have the guts and the willingness to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I just want to echo my colleague's...
I just want to echo my colleague's words. And Mitch, I want to thank you for bringing this item forward, Wade and Stacy, and for your tireless work and your friendship over these years and all the work that you guys do for homelessness, whether it's Thanksgiving or just the day-to-day mission work, it really is inspiring. And I wanted to let folks know, I mean, I was just blown away yesterday at the ribbon-cutting of how beautiful the building is and how beautiful it is in so many respects, not just because it's nice architecture, but because of what's going on inside. And when you meet the people and you see what's happening and you see the bunk beds that are set up, they don't look like army cots. The rooms that are set up there for folks, they look like homes. They're temporary homes, but they look, I mean, they look like beds that you'd want your own children to sleep on, your own families to live in. And that's what's really, you know, great about the mission and its work, and specifically about this new rescue shelter, which I just wanted to let folks know how amazing it is. Everyone should go visit. It should be a model for the city because, as Council Member Kocorian pointed out, there's so much more that we need to do. But thank you all for, Nury and Paul and Mitch and everyone who stepped up to make this happen and keep up the good work. And this is something that will just transform lives. I'm just really, I'm pleased and inspired. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations and thank you for your hard work. And I saw a little snippet of this in the news last night. It was just heartwarming to see that young girl talk about how she will now have a roof over her head, a place to take a bath, and she was so excited about that new comfortable bed she could sleep in, and that speaks volumes. But I not only wanted to congratulate you, but to talk a little bit about what everyone else is saying is that homelessness is a regional issue. And Home for Good, United Way, has been urging all of us as decision-makers to move toward decentralization of services and to provide more permanent supportive housing and shelter on a regional basis. This project speaks to that, that there's a need everywhere in this city and everywhere in the county. So we're hoping to move in that direction. We are hoping as well that the attention that all of us have brought to this issue through the work that the Ad Hoc Committee will do and now getting more attention and focus on this, that we move forward to better address this population and particularly our children, who are often the faces ones when we speak about homelessness. Nobody realizes how many homeless children there actually are, and you're making us realize that to move forward and create the urgency and have the urgency and put that out in the forefront. Thank you all for this presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labonge?
We're the first people here in council chambers because they came and sat right up there and are feeling so good. And last night, to see the reports on television of the success, as I mentioned to you, and the young woman describing how fortunate it was to have a place called "Home" that you have. I just wanted to thank you and I want to thank Mr. Englander for picking up the ball. And I like what Paul Kocorian said about Nury Martinez, "When you see something, you act upon it." And you act upon it with all the energy that you have to make a difference and bring that coalition together of Valley representatives. I was proud to be one, but I'm proud that you have done this in a way now and such a success story back. I do want to leave one idea, members, that I never was able to put across here, and I don't know if Michael Legrand is listening in the Planning Department, but maybe we take, as these centers open up, every religious institution's parking lot and ask them to volunteer two spaces. Give up two spaces for some homeless opportunity and some small housing that's now designed in such a way to have a capable way of finding people's a place. That would be so important. And especially what Mr. Kocorian said about the veterans. Anytime they meet a veteran, the Veterans Association is ready to rap into it and help out. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And I just want to give a big round of applause to Stacy Miller. Stacy Miller, yes. So although I appreciate the nice comments, Mr. Kocorian, but it was Stacy Miller who was there the night of the fire, first thing early in the morning, on the phones, getting all of us to coordinate and asking each and every one of us that represent the Valley to help pitch in. It was Stacy Miller. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to work with you. And Wade, good friend of mine, sorry I couldn't be there yesterday. Congratulations. And I know we're going to continue to work together. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
It's a great honor now that we're presenting this resolution of appreciation of the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, signed by all the council members and the mayor as well, and they've got some beautiful walls to hang it on. And then, two, as we often do with the Valley contingency get-together for breakfast before the Valley meetings, I would invite our next meeting to be held at the Rescue Mission prior to our Valley Council meeting, invite all the Valley Council members for breakfast there, and I think that would be great. Excellent. Fantastic. Congratulations again. Thank you so much.
Mr. Fuentes?
We could ask for reconsideration on number 1H. The constituent is actually here, and if it's deemed approved, would like to get an extension on that as well.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's open up item 1H for reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Fuentes, how long would you like that item to be continued?
Next available appointment would be great. Thanks.
That's July 28th.
Very well. It's continued to July 28th.
Madam President, would you like to reconsider item 90?
That was next, sir. Item 90 for reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Madam Clerk, for item 90, is there a substitute motion?
Yes, a substitute motion has been circulated.
Okay. Thank you. Let's open the roll.
Madam President, the first vote is on whether to substitute.
Correct. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes. Now the matter is before you, the substitute motion is before you for voting.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Madam Clerk, can we please continue item 57 until July 28th?
Is that 57A?
57A, correct. Madam Clerk, let's go to item 31.
Item 31, motion by Councilmember Buscagno.
You want to take up 31 and 47 together?
Please. Yes, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, let's talk some streets here. The city of Los Angeles has the largest street network system in the country. We also have the worst pavement condition in the country. And with nearly one-third so badly damaged, cost-effective maintenance techniques like slurry seal and reconstruction, resurfacing can't be used. Our streets, these types of streets have to be completely reconstructed from the ground up at a cost of more than $3 billion. Now, we don't have $3 billion, and nothing before this council today will yield that kind of revenue. But if we want voters to agree to pay for improving our streets, we need to show that we can be trusted to maintain and preserve them as efficiently and cost-effectively as possible. People don't like seeing their street resurfaced only to have them a month later torn up by another city department. Today is about making sure our operations are as efficient as possible and that we stretch every dollar as far as possible. Now, the two items before you, items 31 and 47, will do the following. They will prioritize a repair of streets that carry the most traffic. They will both reduce the number of street cuts into newly resurfaced streets by requiring the Board of Public Works approve exemptions to the one-year moratorium. Both items before you will bring in more revenue when contractors do cut into our Both items before you will retrofit asphalt plant number one in an effort to lower the cost of production, recycle more and produce better and stronger asphalt that will last longer with trucks and buses. And finally, both items before you will launch a pilot program to better track street cuts using RFID technology. This way, we know who to go after if a repair patch fails. And this afternoon, I'm proud to join Mayor Garcetti and the Bureau of Street Services. They will, the Street Services will complete an unprecedented 2,400 lane miles of slurry seal and resurfacing this last fiscal cycle when this council approved an allocating funding for only 2,200 miles. Now, we still need to make an investment of billions of dollars to fix thousands of miles failed streets in the city. But before we ask voters to open up their wallets, we need to ensure they trust that their money will be spent wisely in the most efficient and effective way. And this is something that we heard over and over and over when Mr. Englander and I launched the Save Our Streets L.A. initiative. We were told, yes, we need to look at finding more revenue to fix our streets, but we just don't trust the city in how it spends its money as it relates to resurfacing our streets. And I hope today, colleagues, after these series of motions are approved, that we will gain their trust today. We do have a technical amendment that I'd like to present specifically on item number 47. Instruction to be amended to read as follows. Authorize the Bureau of Street Services to negotiate a sole-source personal services contract with Shaheen and Associates to update the original SDRF study from 1996 with the scope of work described in the BSSCao and Bureau of Engineering Report's Discussion Section attached to this council file as part of a longer-term effort to ensure a full-cost recovery fee structure. This will afford our Honorable Budget and Finance Committee led by Mr. Kocorian the opportunity to review the contract prior to executing it. So with that, colleagues, I ask for an eye vote on the two items before you today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. And public comment has been satisfied for both items 31 and 47. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes. And that's item 47 is adopted as amended.
Thank you very much. Mr. Price, are you ready for your presentation?
Madam President, members, I'm honored to stand before you today with a cross-section of our community in recognition of the 20th anniversary of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. This is an exciting time in the Ninth District as we celebrate some of the history that's taking place, not just here in Southern California, not just in L.A., but really some national history. For those of you who may not know, in the '20s, in the '30s, in the '40s, Central Avenue was home to jazz, not only in the Western U.S., but throughout the United States. With the abundance of rising local talent and innovative musical genius, Los Angeles was the perfect place for jazz expansion and development. It was not uncommon to stroll by the historic Dunbar Hotel and see Duke Ellington playing some tunes in the lobby. And that same night, the streets were jam-packed with crowds eager to hear the jazz masters at the Club Alabama and other clubs up and down Central Avenue. However, it's not just a legendary, Central Avenue is just not legendary for its pivotal role in the expansion of jazz. Social activists and rising businesspeople could be found along the historic corridor, newspapers, insurance companies, restaurants, all giving voice to an African-American community. South Central had become home of the greatest African-American community west of the Mississippi. So to commemorate the legends and legacy that brought life to and inspired the community through culture, music, and arts, and activities that continue to influence the multicultural, multi-ethnic neighborhoods, we celebrate and honor Central Avenue. On the 25th and 26th of July, from 11 to 7, thousands of Angelinos are going to come to Central Avenue between Vernon and Martin Luther King and celebrating jazz and the culture along this avenue. This is a free community festival with live performances on three stages. There'll be an art pavilion, a youth pavilion, health and wellness pavilion, and a business and jobs pavilion, in addition to merchandise vendors and much, much more. To quickly highlight some of the activities, we put together a series of events leading up to the festival. On Sunday, the 12th of July, in conjunction with the Tom and Ethel Bradley Foundation, we're going to be presenting a conversation with noted entertainer Carmen de la La De, "The Road to Central Avenue." And that's going to be held at Second Baptist Church on 24th and Griffith. And we have Charmaine Jefferson, who's helping us to coordinate that effort, and we appreciate her presence. She provided many fine years of service with the African-American Museum. On Sunday, the 18th, two symposiums, one called "Central Avenue: The Now and the Jazz Legacy of Central Avenue," have been organized by two of our academic friends and supporters, Professor Ethington from USC, Professor Foster from Promona College. Gentlemen, are here. They were. And that's going to take place at 10 o'clock, 10 to 12, 10 to 2, I'm sorry, at A Place Called Home. And Dr. Sharon Harris is here with us from A Place Called Home. We appreciate that. So 24th and Central, right?
29th.
29th and Central, I'm sorry. And then on Tuesday, the 21st, Theater Perception Consortium is going to perform excerpts from North on South Avenue, South Central Avenue, at 7 o'clock over at Jefferson High. And we're pleased to have Carla Park with us. Carla? Put your hand in the air. All right. Each of these events are free and open to the entire community to celebrate. Finally, on Friday, the 24th, a reception fundraiser for Art Active L.A. is going to be held at the Cotton Club, called the Cotton Club at the City Club. And so it's going to be an exciting opportunity to raise some money for young people in our community in arts and other active programs. So it's going to be a month filled with culture, arts, history, and celebrations, and everybody is invited to participate and take place, take part in these activities. Now, I want to recognize a couple of individuals who played vital roles over the past 20 years in making the Central Avenue Jazz Festival a great community event. First of all, we just want to acknowledge two organizations, Coalition for Responsible Development, who has really been a co-sponsor with this over the years, they are not here today, and Concerned Citizens of South L.A. Let's give it up for those two organizations. They have been, they have been real anchors and supporters of this process since the very beginning, and they have really made a difference. We also, though, want to recognize Jose Rizzo. Jose has been the artistic director for all these 20 years. So we know Jose, of course, from K-Jazz. And I'm going to invite Jose to come up here for a second. Jose?
What'd you say? What'd you say? Have a word.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Of course, jazz, as we all know, is losing art form. You know, we need to protect it as much as we can. It is a true American art form, and we've been doing that, honoring the legacy of Central Avenue here in Los Angeles for the last 20 years. So thank you so much for your support in continuing that tradition.
Mr. Price, we have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Sadio?
Okay, let me just finish and then...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No, no.
Go ahead, sir.
And we also want to just acknowledge Michael Dolphin, who along with Jose, again, has been a strong supporter of this event. His dad and family founded the Dolphins of Hollywood. His dad and family founded The Dolphins of Hollywood, an iconic place on Vernon, in the Vernon Central Community. But the contribution that Michael and his family have made to Central Avenue and its history, we greatly appreciate it, and Michael Dolphin, we appreciate your service.
Thank you so much. There are a million things I could say about the importance of Central Avenue and the legacy of Central Avenue, not just Dolphins of Hollywood, but the Sentinel Newspaper, the Alabama Club, a million other things. R.J. Smith once wrote in his book about the history of Central Avenue that Los Angeles is the capital of forgetting. And that's important to me because Central Avenue is so important, as Mr. Labange and I have talked so many times over the years. The history of Central Avenue is as important as any other community in Los Angeles. History has a place. History is about traditions and legacies and the importance of the fact that it even existed in the first place. If Central Avenue Jefferson High School had not existed, we would not have Dexter Gordon. We would have Jesse Belvin. We would have the Olympics and the coasters. We might not have had Alvin Ailey, Dinah Washington, and Dr. Ralph Bunch. All Central Avenue, and more, and more, and more. So I appreciate that the council member has continued to take on the fact and the initiative that continues to pay honorable tradition to Central Avenue. And for my family, and for my dad, thank you.
Madam President, we do have a slight performance, but we can wait until we take comments from members.
Okay. Mr. Sadio?
Congratulations. What a great event to look forward to. I can't thank you enough for preserving the traditions of Central Avenue. My dad was a great dancer, and he used to love to go down to Central Avenue. Let me tell you, one day, in the deepest of his dementia, I'm driving him from Arizona to, you know, back here, and we played Nat King Cole and some Jitterbug music. And man, that guy, he remembered every song and every word, all the, all the great days down there. It was so, so much a part of his, his growing up and his, his life. I also want to acknowledge Jose Riso, because he is a giant. You don't understand, this man's a legend. Forty years on the radio. Think about that. A 40-year career on the radio, jazz on the Latin side, Cal Jader, Gato Barberi, all these great jazz musicians throughout the country, east coast, west coast, bringing those sounds together, the sounds of Latin America and meshing into jazz, Bossa Nova, just a really rich asset for the city. He's doing a great job for you, and then I'm not going to promote mine right now.
Go ahead, go ahead. It's all right.
August 22nd, August 23rd, Latin Jazz Music Festival. It's our second annual, but we want to get to the 20th, and so we, we're going to keep following you. It's going to be a wonderful, wonderful weekend, it always is, and just God bless you, and thank you for keeping the traditions alive, because we can never forget. The other day, we talked about Gerald Wilson and Teddy Edwards, Leroy Vinegar. All these guys were just so wonderful, right? They, they had a venue, they had a place. You're absolutely right. It's the culture and the ambiance that gives us then the space for the Ralph Bunches to emerge, and the Winston Dobies, and the Tom Bradleys, and, and all these great men that helped build and lead this city. And so I cannot thank you enough for this and for keeping the tradition alive, and I'll see you down there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate your leadership. Come see us in July, we'll see you in August. But you're right, music, jazz especially, is such an important transition, such an important bridge. And so it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the past, but also celebrate the present and the rich cultural diaspora that is Central Avenue today. Madam President, to wrap up this recognition, I've invited Ben Guillory and the Robey Theater Company to sing a selection from their most recent play, The Magnificent Dunbar Hotel. And this number is called Meet Me at the Dunbar.
Mr. Price, we have one more member on the queue. Hold on for just a second, I'm sorry. Mr. Labange would like to say a few words.
Keep, keep, I don't want to stop a singer. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Mr. Labange, you can join them later. You want to say a few words? All right, you're going to go straight to the crowd.
Hey, pretty lady.
Hey, babe.
How you doing?
I'm doing just fine.
How about you say you and I get together and go to the Jazz Festival?
You mean the one at the Dunbar Hotel?
That's right, the one on Central Avenue. You know the one.
Well, since I don't know you so well, why don't you just meet me at the Dunbar Hotel? The Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. Come on and...
Meet me at the Dunbar. Meet me at the Dunbar Hotel. Come on and... Meet me at the Dunbar. The Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. The air is filled with music from the maestro himself, Duke Ellington. We dance till after midnight as we swing and jive. The drinks keep flowing. Come on and... Meet me at the Dunbar. Meet me. Meet me at the Dunbar Hotel. Come on and... Meet me at the Dunbar. The Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. Everybody's dressed so fine. Every man's shoe has a spitball of shine. Ladies wrapped in meigs and pearls. The Jazz Festival is out of this world. Come on and... Meet me at the Dunbar. Meet me. Meet me at the Dunbar Hotel. Come on and... Meet me at the Dunbar. The Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. The Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. The Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Labange?
Meet us at the Dunbar. Now, Mr. Price, this is great. You're quite a singer. I want to hear one verse, Mr. Price, come on. Meet me at the Dunbar. All right, all the way. And I just want to congratulate everybody, 20 years or something. Michael, what you said, if we don't know our history, we don't know our past, we can't get to our future, and to reclaim greatness in Los Angeles. I've been fortunate to be here for 39 years plus, and I always read plaques, and I always read the history of what was taking place in the neighborhood and try to recreate it and embrace it. And now you can get lost and found in Los Angeles on this great weekend coming up in July and going down to the Dunbar Hotel and all that excitement on Central Avenue and the Central Avenue City Hall. And I just want to thank you for everyone's commitment to our past, and I shout out to my mentor, who was an Eastside guy, he went to Jeff, Mel Davis, class of 48, 49, a great football player, a great educator, and a real man of Central Avenue. Thank you all, congratulations.
Madam President, also, just let me acknowledge Concerned Citizens, who's been a partner with us from the very beginning and who has been a real founder of this as well, Concerned Citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I have seen it all, gentlemen. There's a request. Madam Clerk, item 86, be sent forthwith, please. First, we're going to, Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to public comment. First speaker, Nathan Lucero. Nathan Lucero, are you here? Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the City Council. I'll make it short. I am a resident of Eagle Rock. I ride my bike on North Figaroa two to four times a week on my way to work in downtown Los Angeles. I received a Street Seas Award for my video journalism regarding issues concerning bike lanes. I received it from L.A. Streets Blog. I am here because I am distressed about the slow progress on North Figaroa. Other neighborhoods in L.A. have implemented road diets, crosswalks, bowl bouts, and bike lanes, while Council District One has stalled. The opportunity to install and paid for bike lanes on North Figaroa from the river to Colorado Boulevard were halted. The L.A. DOT plan for North Figaroa requires attention now. Our recent fatality last Friday really sunk my heart. I, I, and right now, I'm just filled with a renewed sense of urgency to, to address the issues on North Figaroa.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, John Walsh.
John Walsh, Hollywood Highlands dot org. This is the end of Labange Good Riddens. But I'd like to point out how racist this City Council is. Last Friday, we got two and a half hours of nauseating pleas of, oh, you're leaving us, you're leaving us, big crocodile tears. Now, let's compare that to the, because he's white! And I ask every black and Hispanic, you didn't see Bernie Parks getting one goddamn second of congratulations here? Because he's his own man. He's the, you can't rub off the black on Parks' skin the way you can rub off the black on, on Whitey Weston's skin. And everybody knows that's true. And I will be talking about what happened the other day. The mayor tried to get a restraining order on Black Lives Matter so that nobody could get within 50 feet of him or the mayor. The judge rejected it.
The next speaker, next speaker, Steve Gill. Steve Gill, is he here?
So thanks for, hello? Thanks for having us. Council, you're looking at the future of the city of Los Angeles. Yes, we will be in your seats one day. Specifically, these comments are from Councilmember Sadio. You know, there's that development going on on 7th and Burlington right now. They want to open five restaurants and bars with liquor licenses. And I'm from, I'm from MacArthur Park, and I've witnessed the displacements that's gone, displacement that has gone on in Echo Park. And it'd be truly sad to see all this talent leave from the MacArthur Park area as well. We are ready for your leadership, Mr. Sadio, and we do not need all those alcohol licenses next to all those elementary schools in the area. Thank you.
Next, next speaker, next speaker, Don Ward.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Don Ward. I'm just here to call attention to yet another hit-and-run death in a district in which the community came together and, and worked on a safety plan for a major corridor that was then stopped by the council office. And this is happening in several council offices throughout Los Angeles. And I want to thank those council offices that have worked to make our streets safer and urge the council offices of CD4, CD13, and CD1 to, to get on board and, and start creating safer streets for people that are traveling by means other than by car. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Phyllis Dwardy.
Good morning, Phyllis Dwardy with Animal Issues Movement. I'm here to talk to you about a lawsuit we won against the city last month where it was planned that, and any business in the city could have been in danger of having a pet shop that is actually a dog kennel with unlimited dogs of any breed and any size next door, no warning and no protection. Also, for the people within 500 feet, they would have no protection. There were victims in this also in the city. I have 21 pages of emails from the mayor's office that I got through CPRA and 42 pages from the planning department. The planning department employees did not wake up one morning and decide to do this. Lynn Wyatt, Alan Bell, Tom Rothman should have not been involved in something that was this corrupt. You need to protect the people in the city. You also need to protect our city employees. There's an attempt now to do the same thing for cats with 20 cats per backyard. We will fight that, and we will win that in court if we have to.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to hold public comment and move on to item 91.
And for item 91, Madam President, an amended motion, 91A, has been circulated.
We have cards on item 91, Mr. Herman.
Children, children are there. Test, 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 test. Yes. We're looking at $7.7 million for a loan agreement with the Technic Shop in Los Angeles, LLC. Tech shop, smoke shop. What is this? What is this? Batman wants to know, what is this? A fund to establishment for tech shop in Los Angeles? Is this the business you're attracting to L.A.? Or are you going to give us $25 an hour versus the 15 to work at the tech shop? Batman wants to know for the children, the children. All the children here and their families want to know. Why can't they get the same tech shop throughout Los Angeles? And what about Van Nuys? They want communication, not communication breakdown, Ms. Nury. Batman wants to know why, Nury. You cannot provide communication the way you propose it here. Public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next speaker, Michael Hunt. Mr. Hunt, your time is running out, sir.
Like I say, once you vote for the red chief, 99% of these ordinances are unconstitutional.
He is not talking about this item.
Well, is it an ordinance or is it, is it a what?
Sir, we're on item 91, Mr. Hunt.
Well, vote it down, because 99.9% of the ordinance are unconstitutional. The red chief, vote for it.
The next speaker. Sergeants, can you please help our audience understand this is a council meeting and we need to lower our voices? Our next speaker is Mr. Wayne Spindler, item 91.
Oh, you took my seconds away, Nury. We're here to speak on little children and the $7.7 million loan fraud waste bill of 2015 for something called tech shop. It's being used to, to teach baristas how to pour coffee, because that's very important in a technological society with no real jobs. You have to be able to train more baristas so they can pour coffee for all the rich scumbags on the West Side and all over the city. Hold a public hearing. Well, that's us. We're creating a living wage, Nury. Microenterprises for the kids. One day, we'll all grow up someday and have jobs, and then we'll go down to Jose Wezard's district and get drunk after work. I mean, that's what, that's what daddy does, and then daddy slaps mommy and goes...
Mr. Spindler, you need to stick to item 91, sir.
Don't be a hoe. That's what my daddy calls my mom a hoe. Don't be a hoe. 7.7 million...
Mr. Spindler? Mr. Spindler, you need to stick to item 91. We also have children in the back of the room, by the way.
Don't get uppity, don't get uppity. 7.7 loan agreement for the tech shop, Nury, so the kids can learn how to become baristas, because there's not going to be any jobs in L.A., so the only thing they can do is go to the park and take crack.
No, you're done, Mr. Spindler. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Barajas. Byron Barajas, are you here?
Well, I think the only question I have for this is, what is the mission of this tech shop? You're giving so much money into this place, but it doesn't specify what the mission of this place is. What I would recommend is if you're going to treat this as some sort of place where people can come in and, you know, develop their, I don't know what you want to call it, but my opinion would be if it's not towards the development of the species, the human species, then this tech shop technically is not meant for anything. So, $7.7 million of loans, yet this country hasn't even developed the next Einstein. Even if you invested all that money in one person, you still won't get an Einstein. So you have to declare, as some people here have declared war on poverty, what about the poverty that happens in the minds of individuals? So tech shop, fine, whatever, but what is the mission? I haven't, I mean, I read the damn thing, but I haven't, I haven't thought of what the hell's the mission of this tech shop. There should be specific or, uh, measures, sort of like when you start a renaissance, which is needed now. But if this tech shop is not, it's just, you know, whatever anyone wants, it's, it's So people have to grow up, tech shop, whatever. You want to start a renaissance? I want to start a renaissance just to get rid of the crap that's in, are in people's heads these days. So, tech shop, okay, fine. Let's see if you can save the human race with that.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, that concludes cards for this item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Item passes.
That's adopted as a amendment. Madam President, would you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Yes, let's go into the special meeting.
Bloomingfield, Bonnebustano, Sedio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezard, Corretes, Correa, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, 13 members present, accor, Madam President.
Thank you, and what's next?
Item 100 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
There are no, no cards on this item. Open the roll.
And also, Madam President, amended motion 100A has been circulated.
Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Item passes.
Madam President, does somebody wish to adjourn the, the special and return to the regular meeting?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
And that brings council back to general public comment.
Okay, the next speaker is Chuck Tenon, under public comment. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, council members. Councilman Tom La Bange was an outstanding public servant. In time, he may be forgotten by city council members, the mayor's office, or the people of LA that he served, but City Hall itself will never, ever forget Tom La Bange and all that he has contributed to this city. He carved his name in this city council, and he will be missed. If I had the power to make a motion, and you council members, I would nominate him for a position in the mayor's office as a deputy mayor of public relations between City Hall and the people of LA. Why? Because Tom La Bange, he carved his name in the halls and the walls of City Hall, a place that he served, a place that he loved, and where he belongs. Tom, may God bless you always in everything you do. Your friend, Chuck Tenon.
President, Mr. Wezard.
Abak, can you drop me a motion to put what that man said, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. I just want to make another announcement that 57A, Madam Clerk, was continued till July 28th. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. Next speaker, Manuel Flores. Public comment, Manuel Flores, is he here?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Manuel Flores, and I'm the president of Westlake Advocacy. I'm also part of the neighborhood council system, but I'm here independent of the neighborhood council. Today, I'm here to speak with you. Have you guys ever been to Langers on Seventh Street? Three lights before that, there's Burlington, and we're having a development project there. It's Seven and Burlington, the southeast corner. If you guys notice, there's Esperanza Elementary, Camino Nuevo Charter Academy, Camino Nuevo Early Education, Burlington, Burlington Head Start State Preschool, and John Leighty Middle School. This development project is a nightclub that is less than 100 feet away from these schools. According to the statistics, the American Journal of Public Health stated that in the city of Los Angeles, whenever an alcohol outlet opens, 3.4, and it increases in crime, pretty much. Tomorrow, we're going to have a town hall meeting down the street at 8:47.
Thank you, sir, your time, sir.
Wednesday, July 1st.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, General. I don't see anyone with that name here. Next speaker, Donna Pearlman. Donna, you still here?
Good morning, Donna. Good morning. Anyway, Miriam couldn't, couldn't make it, it's too hard, and I'm in mourning, and I was late, it's two hours, it's not enough. Bring back video conferencing, we have the technology. The man who shot those people in the church was wrong. The Confederate flag did not murder those people, the person did it. It's wrong to ban the Confederate flag. It's a symbol of the South. I have Southern heritage and proud of my ancestors. Banning them, my Confederate flag will only bring out anger. South has black history, black history there, too. Underground Railroad, Tuscany, to name a few. We need to unite. Communist Democrats wants to divide us. Obama especially. Next will be banning the American flag because it will offend the terrorists. Oops, can't say that offensive, Islamic radicals. They will ban the American flag and the California flag. Democracy, freedom, because it's offensive to many outside the US.
Thank you, Donna.
Don't ban it.
Next speaker, Agustin Sevada.
Hello, my name is Agustin Sevada. I'm with the Chicano Roundtable, and I came here to talk about the declaration of war that you made last week against the people, the poor people, the homeless people of LA. You have no plan, no plan at all. I mean, what's going to happen when you throw all these people out into the street? Are they going to be rioting or anything? What about some fair housing? Some housing for people who do not have any kind of money to pay anything, they're down on their luck, they need housing. There is no plan. Either you or Garcetti have come forth with a plan to do something about this issue. It's just going to throw them out there and the hell with it, whether they go rioting or they starve to death, or little children are out in the streets with their parents. I've seen a lot of it on Spring Street before they clear them all out. So you people, I don't know if you have a conscience, and I'm surprised. Gil Sedio, thank you, you're the only one who stood up for the people. The rest of you, I don't know what's going on here. Mr. Englander finally got some, must have had an...
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Michael Carrion. Michael Carrion. Next speaker, John Camaro.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. John Camaro, member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. I'd like to wish you all a happy Fourth of July. We are here today to thank Mr. Parks for his service to our city and communities. Mr. Parks, you have been a great example to me and others in showing how an elected official should present himself. You are a man of integrity, dignity, and class. Thank you, sir, for your years of service, and may God bless you.
Very nice. Thank you very much, sir.
Greetings, Council President Martinez. It's Eric Previn on June 30th, in advance of July 1. I would ask that the public have a chance to see Rule 93 enforced. This is the council, City of Los Angeles council rule that provides that everybody be given the same visual criteria. You got to focus on the speaker, not on the room. It's, I don't know when Mayor Garcetti or if it was Herb Weston who changed the rule, but I ask this great council, who, who I believe do care what the constituents have to say, at least relax that so that we can be equal in at least that small sense. Obviously, nobody wants to take away the giant influence and all that stuff. You're welcome to have that. That said, item 68, I misspoke, was the item that Mr. Bloomingfield and Englander are looking to fight the possibility of holding off on giving penalties to people for sleeping in their car. That's not nice. And it's very important to say that items 16 and 61, Motorola Solutions, I just want to identify this group, they lobby heavily through Englander, Knabbe, and Allen. This is over $100,000, and it's a gift, so thank you, to USC, no thank you, for cybercrime work. Cybercrime is important.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, Candido Maris.
Good morning, council members. Candido Maris, proud resident of the 12th District. For 25 years, close to 25 years, myself, Mr. Piper, and Mr. Camaro have been working with the rescue mission, and the rescue mission did wonderful things. We were involved with when they needed washing machines, when they needed repairs, but you gave them the home, Mr. Englander. You and this council gave them a home. They had a building, they were, before, they were all stuck in a big room. Now, we were there this morning doing it. Yesterday, we were feeding and helping with the food bank with Mr. Herb, Will Hernandez. He said you had an outstanding speech. But it's this council, and I hope that everyone here and all those critics here who criticize you because they find something that they find at fault with you, they should see your Pals program, they should see the, the rescue mission that's in our area. It's an example for every part of this city. So I thank you, and I thank Mr. Corretes, and I thank Mr. Fuentes, he was there, and you look a little bit like Mr. Fuentes. Thank you, Mr. Maris.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Happy Fourth of July. Next speaker, Byron Barajas.
Well, now, what's, the issue here is, if you want to stop the poverty situation, it's very simple. You do exactly what the Greek government is doing. What are they doing? They're saying no to genocide. They're not going to pay off illegitimate debts. What I can say is, Europe wants to move for a Glass-Steagall Act to separate the banks. It is Wall Street money which they themselves want us to bail in terms of money. In terms of economy, we in the United States bail our species out by development. And in the increase of that money, it pays itself off in the end. So, your sister city, we agree with you.
Now, Madam Speaker, I observe you have not put the clock on. And in interest of the public, Uncle Tom should be sitting down on his way out to take the criticism I have for the white Uncle Tom racist. Sit down, Tom, you're disrupting the meeting while we're speaking a general public comment. Take the criticism from the public. Worthless, worthless, worthless. And then going back to Mr. Big Ears Englander, who's running for county supervisor as Elf, E-L-F, I can't say no more, but meow, meow, little Big Ears, cry, 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 because Batman's here to take on and say to you, goodbye, Tom La Bange. Glad to see you leave. I hope I don't miss you anymore. But now to the 10 seconds. Thank you, thank you, thank you for taking away the illegal ramp on 311 Broadway. You could have killed someone, boneheads.
Next speaker, Michael Hunt. Is Michael Hunt still here?
Yes, a moment of silence for the, the death, the death of the dearly departed former councilman Tom La Bange. Yes, thank you. I went to the fourth floor at room 425. Tomorrow, David Woo comes here. He comes here today, the first Korean-American ever elected to the council, baby. Despite the racist efforts of Herb Weston, we stopped you. We still got an Asian-American on the council. The people rose up, and we defeated the puppet Carolyn Amzie. We defeated her. So tomorrow, the people have one out of 14 chances to have representation versus zero out of 15. Yay!
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comments. What is the four?
Madam President, there's some items I requested to send forth with, the following items. It's item nine, item eight, item 23, 24, 31, 33, 36, 37, 48, 55, 85, 91, 92, 94, and 97. Those requests for those items to go forth with, and if you'd like, you can do that without objection.
Without objection?
Council has motions for post-nam referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. Fourth of July is coming, colleagues. Let your constituents know to go to Safe4J, sorry, Safe July 4th, Safe July 4th, safelif4th.org for a list of all of the free shows in the city of Los Angeles. I am hosting a show at Verdugo Hills High School and San Fernando High School. Would very much appreciate, colleagues, if you share and spread the word about Safe July 4th. I also have a, a really quick introduction that I'd like to make. We've got the Department of Recreation and Parks here today. I mentioned to you that the city of Los Angeles is partnering with 7-Eleven for a free pool day on July 4th. We have the department here to share with you some information so that all of your constituents citywide can get a little relief from the heat and enjoy a free pool day at a fantastic Recreation and Parks pool. Take it away.
Assistant General Manager Vicki Israel. Good job, Vicki.
Thank you, councilmen and to all of you. I want to just introduce Dennis Francis from 7-Eleven, the district manager for all of Los Angeles. He and his franchisees are making it possible for free swim to all youth 17 and under at all of our 47 swimming pools on Saturday, 7-Eleven Day, July 11. With that, I would like to introduce Dennis Francis.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you for allowing us to partner with the Parks and Rec. It is our birthday on July 11th. I'd encourage all of you to come out to one of the county pools and see all the wonderful things happening out there. We're more than honored to donate to the cause, and we hope to do it again in the future. You may not know this, but every single day, 7-Elevens have fresh product delivered to each and every store. And I'm talking about fresh salads, sandwiches, cut fruit, you name it. So we're going to sample out there at the, at the, all the pools in the county the week prior to 7-Eleven Day, and we're going to sample fresh products so that they can see the offerings we have for all of the citizens of our city. Thank you. Thank you, 7-Eleven.
Mr. Fuentes, thank you for your leadership, Vicki Israel, for Partners, Recreation and Parks. Thank you, 7-Eleven. That old line, thank heaven for 7-Eleven. Put on some sunscreen, too. Thank you. Mr. Wezard.
Thank you, Mr. La Bange, or should I say, Mr. Los Angeles. You know, whenever I...
You know, whenever I mention that to somebody, that you are Mr. Los Angeles, nobody disputes that. God bless you, Tom, on your last meeting. Love you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. I just want to take a moment. As we celebrate tomorrow, the incoming two new councilmembers that we are so fortunate to have as our new colleagues, David Rue and Marquise Harris-Dawson. Let's not forget our two outgoing councilmembers. We had a wonderful celebration for Mr. LA himself, Tom LeBange, last week. But our other colleague, Bernard Parks, left rather quietly. And I just want to acknowledge Bernard Parks and his 12 years of exceptional service to his district. And just, just to note, you know, Bernard Parks comes from a different generation than most of us, are baby boomers and beyond. And he has spanned quite an incredible place in our LA's history. He became a police officer in 1965 during the height of the civil rights era. And he quickly moved up in the ranks in the LAPD, becoming a sergeant in 1969, a lieutenant in 1973, captain in 1977, onto commander in 1980, deputy chief '88, assistant chief in '92, and chief of the LAPD in 1997. He became councilmember of the 8th District in 2003. Bernard Parks has been my seatmate for the past two years, and it's been a very valuable experience for me personally, really getting to know him a little bit and understanding and respecting his deep intellect. He's a very critical thinker, we all know that. He will speak his mind even when it's inconvenient. And, you know, I can respect that. He's a very independent thinker, and he has added to the discussions on this body. And lastly, I remember during one presentation, it was brought out that he was one of People Magazine's 50 Most Beautiful People.
Curtiest people, I like to tease him on that.
I mistakenly said, in the United States, when I sat down, he said, "No, Mitch, I was one of the most 50 beautiful people in the world." Just, just to correct me. But, and that, you know, that he was. He was quite, quite the looker. But he was, he is a remarkable man, and he is from the state of Texas. But he went to LACC, then Pepperdine where he received his bachelor's degree, and then USC where he received his master's in public administration. And I know that Mr. Parks would not want me to say any of what I just said, but I feel that I owe it to him, his 50 years in public service. And I just want to tip my hat to Mr. Parks at this moment and thank him for 50 years of service.
Very good, Mr. O'Farrell. We all do. 50 years of commitment to Los Angeles. We thank Bernard Parks and his work in serving the city. Mr. Sidio.
President LeBange, being an Angelino, you know that the name and the legend of Bernard Parks was long established. Growing up in the city, he was a pioneer in the LAPD and made history. But what I appreciate about him was his courage. As you know, I've worked on this driver's license proposal for 16 years. And we got it to the governor's desk very early on. Whereas a Tuesday night, we were getting ready. The next day, was it Monday night? The next day, we were going to work out the logistics to get it signed. And we got up the next day, and it was 9/11. And our world changed forever. And it was a very dramatic time period for the whole nation. I had to drive across state to come to LA to see my wife. I was taken back by the CHP a day later as we went back into session. And I called Bernie Parks, Chief Parks, because he was supporting the driver's license bill. But there were already rumors that these terrorists had had driver's licenses. There were some people, the frenzy and the hysteria, they were trying to draw a link to that. And so I called him up, and I said, "I want to make sure you understand that this is going on and that some people are trying to draw a link between this." And he said, "Gilbert, it was a good bill before 9/11. It's a better bill today." Because we need to know who's in this country. We need to use the resources that we have. I was for it before, and I'm still for it. You go ahead and move that bill and let people know that the LAPD's police chief supports the driver's license for all immigrants. And that was a very courageous stand, because early on, there weren't a lot of law enforcement people who were willing to step up and do the right thing. Now, everybody's for it. Right? Now, we're at almost 400,000 new licenses issued, a million-plus waiting to take the driving test. But back then, it took a man of tremendous courage and conviction of his values and his viewpoints to stand up and say that he was for that. And I'll always appreciate him for that. An entire immigrant community of this city and this nation will appreciate him for that.
Very well said, Mr. Sidio. Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, Mr. Coretts.
Well, I just wanted to say something about both of you, just very briefly, that especially in this era of term limits, your personalities are both a little different. I think some might say, but it is rare that you find two people that have spent their entire adult lives serving the City of Los Angeles in the way that Tom LeBange and Bernard Parks have. So, I just want to give my recognition to both of you. You did it in slightly different ways, but you both were of great service to the City of Los Angeles.
Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to do that. And both, Mr. Parks, he went to St. John Vianney with one of my brothers that I remember when he was a great athlete there. And then later on at City College, and I followed him because he's a little older than me at City College, too, as both athletes there. But so well said by Mr. Sidio and Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you so much. Any other announcements? Announcements?
Yes, tragically, this Friday morning at about 3:00 AM, one life was lost and one life was ruined. One life was lost because we had a, allegedly, a drunken motorist. Whether or not he went through a green light, he was drunk. And he hit a cyclist who was going through the intersection. And so, one life is lost, and one life is ruined. 3:00 AM in the morning. Doesn't matter whether or not they were going through a green light. Then, to make matters worse, the person, whether they knew it or not, took off. And so I stand to thank the LAPD and the community for working together. And by later that afternoon, an arrest was made. And, you know, unfortunately, the driver, 21-years-old, and the victim yet, family has yet to be notified, a young man of 33. So, one life is lost, one life is ruined. 3:00 AM, you know, highway safety is very important. And we have to do all that we can, and it requires all of us to comply with the law to make sure that the laws work for everyone. And so I want to thank the LAPD for working hard with the community, keeping my office updated from the inception, and working with my office to make sure that we stay very focused on making sure that we could bring in the suspect and make sure that justice has meted out for all that is concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Any other announcements, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to want to invite neighbors and friends to come out for the Fourth of July celebration at Exposition Park. There's going to be music, food, games, activities, and at dusk, a spectacular fireworks show at the Colosseum. And so, neighbors and friends are invited to come out, be a part of the celebration, and have some fun. Everything is free, and indeed, the space, the Aaron Space, the Science Center is going to be open, Science Museum, and the African-American Museum will be open. And so, folks can come out and have a good time, free of charge.
Great job. Thank you very much. Mr. Bustacayno.
Mr. LeBange, tonight is two of four of our community outreach meetings on our sidewalk issue here in the City of Los Angeles. We'll be in South Los Angeles tonight. So, the Public Works and Budget and Finance Committees will meet tonight from 6:00 to 8:00 at 7600 Avalon Boulevard. Everyone's welcome. It'll be at the Estelle Van Meter Senior Center. Hope you can all join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements on this side? Before I call for a jury motion, I want to announce that I want to thank my staff who's here today. Eric King, who has been traded over to, is it announced yet? Has it been announced? Stand up, Eric. It hasn't been announced yet. Does he even know? Okay. And is Eric King, give Eric a big hand. He handles things at Sherman Oaks. Vadim Gassy, stand up, Vadim. Keep standing, Eric. Vadim Gassy was a great council aide for us there. Thank you, Vadim. Leslie Shim, Leslie, stand up. Thank you very much. Now playing for Mike Bonin in the 11th District. Sharon Shapiro, give her a big hand there. Anna Nunez, can get a bus at 5:00 to 5:00 and do anything, walk on water. Good job, Anna Nunez. Thank you very much. Alice Roth, Alice, the Valley Deputy for Toluca Lake. Thank you right there. Hillary, Hillary, right there. Hillary, step and run. Hillary, thank you for all the work that you did there. And we also had earlier today with us Juliette Durand, who's working right now as the acting chief of staff. And I want to salute Isaac Burks, longtime friend and a great one there. Isaac, firefighter, United States Marines, wonderful person there. And when we had the problem, when we downsized our city workforce, right away, I went out and I hired a Conservation Corps worker. Now, I have three Conservation Corps employees that are working. And I got a truck, I bought a truck. First got to buy a truck. And if we see a mattress in the 4th District, we pick it up. If it's on the border of the 13th, we pick it up. If it's anywhere, we see it, we pick it up. And I want to salute you guys, stand down. The hardest-working members of the 4th District, right? Manny Bonilla, get Manny Bonilla, Long Beach State student, right there. Bernie Rahava, great man of Recreation and Parks. And Junior Gomez there, Gregorio Gomez. So, just such a great job, and I know we're working on there. Xiao Chan, she gives Xiao Li, Xiao Li. Sure, in the Griffin Park Fire in 2007, she was the only house to get burnt. When I had a salute to the firefighters, I ran into her mother, and she told me she had a daughter. And I said, "Where's the daughter go to school?" And "What school did she went to, Gil?" Marshall High. She got hired the next day. So, a graduate of UC Santa Barbara, a master's degree, as well as Cal Berkeley, and a tremendous individual, Xiao Li. Thank you very much. And the best here, Juliette Durand. Get up here, Juliette. Get some recognition. She was an intern in the office. She was from France. She met a young American boy, and they got married, have two beautiful children. She speaks five languages. She's very, very special to me, and she's done a wonderful job. Juliette Durand, thank you, Juliette, for that there. So, I, thank you. And let's thank you very much. And the smartest one of my employees, if I can say that, is the one that let me the first when I got into the final run. She was picked up, two first-round draft choices to be named later. The one and only Debbie Kim, who is now with Gil Sidio's office. Debbie Kim, thank you very much. So, I just want to thank you. I want to thank the Legislative Analyst Office, Sharon So, and all the work that you've done. And I really want to thank Avak, even though Avak gets mad at me sometimes because I ask for so much. Avak is the most dedicated city employee that I know. When I see him walking in the morning in his neighborhood, which is the neck, I live the next neighborhood over, he picks off every sign that's illegally posted and makes sure the neighborhood's clean, and does a great job. He's truly a wonderful individual. He went to LA High. He's a shy guy, but I love him. Avak Italian. Good job, Avak. And I want to thank all the sound people there, and our photographers, and all the work, and the clerks, everybody there. I just, and even our city attorney there, you wild guy, you. So, and I especially want to thank Herb Weston. Herb Weston has been our quarterback. I thank you. Each and every one of you are very special members. I'm sorry Mr. Parks is not here, because this is a great joy, to be able to come and serve the people of Los Angeles and be able to work for the people of Los Angeles, from Mayor Bradley's Youth Council, to working for Peggy Stevenson, to the late, great John Farrar, who this chamber is named after, to work for Richard Reardon, and work through a disaster like the earthquake where all of us got to work harder and selflessly when that happens again. And it will happen again. I hope it doesn't happen on anybody's watch. And then, through the period of time, from Mr. Han, where we kept the city together, because secession would still be a nasty divorce if it took place. And then Mr. Vera Costa, with his great energy. I'm very proud of the Purple Line Out, Wilshire Boulevard, and I called for that first. But Mr. Vera Costa picked right up when he got elected, and then Mr. Fear, when he was Assemblyman, wrote the legislation to get Prop R approved, all the way down the line. And our former colleague, Mr. Garcetti, which is so special that Eric left this body, and now he leads this city. I will tell you, if you could do anything, bring the Olympic Games here, because if they have a challenge in Boston, they won't have a challenge in Los Angeles. We're ready to help anybody and invite the world. That was the greatest period of my time, and I went to 24 Olympic events with Mr. Farrar. And it was way, way, way pre-9/11. So, if the door to the venue was where Mr. Kokorian sits, I parked the car for John right here, and we walked in. And he sat on the finish line, and I sat with the diplomats and attaches just before, which was so special. So, good luck to all of you. There's no place like the City of Los Angeles. I love you all, and let's rise for a jury motion. And I must add, Mr. Price, before I do that, I can't forget my family. And I just want to mention that from my grandfather, who came from Germany in 1886 and lived at 310 North Main. The only reason I know that address is because everything was all in a different language except the address on that. And my grandfather from Ireland, who came and lived in Lincoln Heights and had 11 children on Sitchell Street, including my mother, Mary Louise LeBange. And my mother and father, who both went to college in the '30s, which was an amazing, my dad, Loyola University, my mom, Mount St. Mary's. And then all my seven brothers, who have truly have been an inspiration for me. And my wife, Bridget, and my children, who, Mary Catherine and Charles. So, it's been a great honor. I know why Mr. Weston made me a president pro tem, because he knew if I was up here, I wouldn't speak as much as I would if I was down there. But I love Herb, and I thank you, Herb, for this. So, I want to now bring us up into this, there's the shot. Look at this great shot of these great councilmembers. And look at Nerri's smile right here. Back up a little, Curran, you get that shot? Is that Gary Leonard over my shoulder? He's got it right there. So, it's just very special to be all here together. And I thank every city employee who I've worked with before and after. And for the deputies, work hard, because you're as responsible for you, the districts, as your elected officials are. And you'll have joy in meeting the people of Los Angeles and helping them, because that is where you score, when you connect people to the great services of Los Angeles. And take those words and work hard for your districts. And thank you to all the employees of Los Angeles. Now, at this time, let's play reverence for those who went before us, and I want to call on Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Let me just say, this chamber will never be the same without your presence, and we appreciate your service. Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mr. Harold L. Williams, a notable African-American architect, dedicated 50 years of his life to making our city more beautiful. His pursuits broke down barriers, opened up the doors, and provided opportunities for many minority architects. Mr. Williams obtained a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the School of Architecture at Miami University in Oxford, Ohio, in 1951. He then pursued graduate studies in urban design at the University of Southern California. Mr. Williams was the ninth African-American architect to be licensed in Los Angeles in 1958. Knowing the struggles, the lack of support for minority architects, as he founded the Southern California Association of Minority Architects and Planners, MAP, in 1960. As MAP expanded nationally, Harold became the co-founder of the National Organization for Minority Architects in 1971. He later served as its president from 1981 to 1982. Mr. Williams was a chief architect on public building projects, including Compton City Hall, Compton Civic Center, California State Building, the King Drew Medical, Magnum High School, and many, many more. He leaves behind a legacy of architecture and civil rights. We owe him a debt for all he's done for this city and our community. He will be sorely missed.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Sidio?
Members with a tremendous sad heart, Margarita Cuevas was born July 28, 1916. She passed away at the age of 98 on June 28. She passed away at the age of 98 on June 27. I took a text message from a dear friend of mine, Ray Cuevas, fire captain, El Surino. She was a dedicated and fiercely protective mother, she led by example and instilled important and necessary virtues of dedication, loyalty, kindness, compassion, and respect. She taught her children to be responsible to both family, friends, society, and to her Catholic faith. She was the bond, the glue that kept her family together, and it's without doubt that her legacy and these virtues she instilled will live on in the good works in the lives of her children, her grandchildren, her great-great-grandchildren. She was a good and faithful servant, and she led this incredible family, the Cuevases, who grew up in El Surino and who attended Wilson High, and lived a very long and rich life, and she'll be, continued to be loved and cherished by her family that she left behind. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you very much. Mr. Inglander?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So with great sadness that I announce the passing of Della Carroll, a long resident of Granada Hills, in fact, a lifelong resident of Granada Hills and a true pillar of our community. Her participation in the community started from a young age as a youth participant in the Granada Hills Holiday Parade, where she, in her later years, became involved as an active community member. Della was also Granada Hills Chamber Manager for over six years, earning the reputation as one of the finest Chamber executives in the entire San Fernando Valley. Even in her later years, Della never lost her joy in serving our community and remained active in various volunteer roles following her departure as a Chamber Manager. She's survived by her husband, Kevin, and we will certainly miss her and enjoy her smile and her laughter. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes our adjournment motions, we wish everyone well, I wish the new council well, with the new council member from the 8th District, Marquise, and I wish Mr. Rue well, and wish each and every one of you well. There's no greater joy than serving the people of Los Angeles. So I'll keep talking, and I know it would be a trouble, Mr. Wesson, if I don't mention my girlfriend, Janice Han, because when I served with Janice, life was good. So let's adjourn this meeting, go forth and serve the city well. Thank you, everybody, thank you.